Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAE 16 and can be found on channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Get going. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Exeter zoning Board of Adjustment meeting for Tuesday, August 15th. My name is Bob Pryor. I'm the chair. To my right is Laura Davies. To my far left is Martha Pennell, followed by Laura Montagno and Teresa Page. And all five of us will be voting on the application this evening. So we only have one item of new business. We'll get right to it. This is the application of Aaron Jefferson for a variance from Article 5, Section 5.1.2B for a change to an existing non-conforming use to permit a small auto repair operation on the property located at 165 Kingston Road. Subject property is located in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, Tax Map Parcel 115-12, and this is ZBA Cas... Cas... Case 23-12. I will learn how to speak shortly. Good evening, Ms.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Sharon Summers. I'm an attorney at Donahue, Tucker, and Chindela, and I'm here tonight representing Aaron Jefferson. With me also is Dennis Berry, who is the current owner of the property. The property in question is shown on the tax maps which were submitted as part of your application materials, and these... The tax map is 115-12. Originally, the property consisted of two parcels, which is 115-13 and 115-12. That was subdivided in 1993, and 115-13, which is currently owned by Karen Vences and which fronts on Kingston Road, that is burdened by an access easement which services lot 115-12. So far, so good? Okay. So very briefly, and this is in the cover letter that I wrote to the board, the history of the property is such that, starting in the 1970s, it was used for various commercial activities. It was used for quite some time as a welding facility with the operations taking place within the existing building that's out there. Later, it was used as an excavation company by Mr. Berry. In more recent times, it has been used to store landscape material and also to conduct equipment repair. So that is by way of background, and what we are seeking tonight is to transform the existing non-conforming use, which is a commercial use in an R1 zone, and to change that non-conforming use from the historical use of welding, excavation, and so forth into a small-scale auto repair shop. So that's what's before us tonight. As I said, you have the tax map in front of you, which depicts the area and also the abutting properties. Also, as a reference point, I have included what is marked as Exhibit 3, and that... Those are Google Earth photos which show the... You can see it on here. There's a large building which is kind of parallel to Kingston Road. It's kind of a big gray building. That's going to be the repair facility, together with the building that's behind that. And as you can see from these two photos, I think you can see, the two closest houses would be that of the Vences property. The Vences is shown as the building to the left, and it's kind of a semicircular driveway. There's a red car next to that. And then the other property is in the Farmington Estates subdivision on the next property over, and there's a large wooded buffer area between that, and it's 164 feet by our calculations between that house and the building where the repairs will be conducted. So with that, by way of background, I'd like to just quickly go over the variance criteria to indicate why...
Go ahead. Sorry to mean interrupt.
Oh, okay. To indicate our compliance with the criteria, so...
Before you get to the criteria, I do have some questions about the layout of the property.
Sure.
Is it okay to take that now, or would you rather go through the criteria first?
Doesn't matter to me. Whatever you'd like to do.
So as you drive down Kingston Road, there is a driveway that has a piece of machinery or something holding up two mailboxes that appears to be the access road. Is that correct?
I'm going to defer to my client to answer that question.
Yes. That is the access road to this. And that access road has two mailboxes. You might want to come up because your answers need to be audible and recorded.
Well, one of you...
Either one of you who wants to answer the question. Can you please explain the two mailboxes?
One is Karen...
You are?
Aaron Jefferson.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's all right.
One is Karen Vences', and one serves as Dennis Berry's mailbox for 165A Kingston Road.
I thought it said 167 on it, one of them. It doesn't. It says 160... What's yours?
163.
163. Three and a seven. It was getting dark out. Okay. All right, so there are two mailboxes, and that's the access road, and that is on the property that's labeled 163 on here. Okay, thank you.
So continuing on the variance criteria, starting with whether or not the variance is contrary to the public interest, the intent of the ordinance here is to... That we're seeking relief from allows a change in the purpose, manner, or extent of a non-conforming use only by variance, and the intent of the ordinance is arguably to regulate any change from one non-conforming use to another, which might injure abutters or the public. So that's one of the first steps, to look at the intent. The second element of that is to whether or not granting the variance will alter the essential character of the neighborhood or threaten the public health, safety, or welfare. In this case, the essential character of the existing neighborhood consists of a longstanding non-conforming commercial use dating back to the 70s, and this is located amidst abutting residential lots. The proposed use of a small-scale auto repair shop servicing three or four vehicles a day during regular hours does not deviate so drastically from the manner, purpose, or extent of the existing non-conforming use so as to alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Again, there has been a non-conforming commercial use on that property since the 1970s with abutting residential properties around it, and what we are proposing to do is to simply swap out one non-conforming use into another. The small-scale auto repair facility that we are proposing, which will be occurring inside the existing building, does not threaten the health, safety, or welfare of the neighborhood as we are making... Going to be making arrangements for the proper disposal of waste oil, and the hours of operation are going to be limited. As a result, we don't believe that the variance is going to grant or to alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Second criteria, as the board knows, is the spirit and intent of the ordinance and whether that's observed. As you know, that criteria is identical to the public interest criteria above, so I would state that the arguments presented on the public interest should be incorporated into this one as well. On the substantial justice criteria, the applicant... The test, of course, is whether there is any gain to the general public which would outweigh the loss to the applicant if the variance is denied. We believe that here, if the variance is denied, the existing non-conforming use, commercial use, could continue. The proposed operation is going to be a small-scale operation. It's going to take place within the confines of the building, and while traffic will remain present on that act... Well, it's actually an easement. It's not an access road, per se. It will only occur during the day. If the variance is denied, by contrast, the applicant will not be able to proceed with his plan to have a small-scale auto repair shop in this facility. So with that, we do not believe that there's any gain to the general public because if this is denied, the non-conforming commercial use can continue anyway. The fourth criteria is the values of the surrounding property. We do not believe that these would be diminished by granting this variance. Adjacent residential properties have long been in existence, and at a time when the existing non-conforming use was in existence. The most recent residential lots that I was able to locate that came into creation since the 1970s were the Farmington Estates subdivision, which is next to us, and one of which is pictured... That's lot 100-2-1. One of that is pictured in my Exhibit 3. That subdivision was created in 2002. So clearly, all of these residential lots that are currently surrounding the non-conforming use have been in existence for decades.
I'm sorry, can you restate the lot or the subdivision that was created in 2002?
Sure. So the subdivision that was created in 2002, if you look at Kingston Road, there is like a cul-de-sac that comes off of that, and it serves what is depicted as 100-2-1, and then 3, and then 100-2-3.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that was the subdivision that was created in 2000 and...
The Farmington Road?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So the long and short of it is that those residential lots have been in existence for quite some time, and whatever impact is going to be felt by the commercial use has already been felt, and there's really nothing that's going to be changing so as to differ that impact. The last criteria is that of hardship and whether the literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. First criteria or first element of this, of course, is whether or not there are special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. And we believe that the subject lot is unique relative to other lots in the area because it was originally part of a larger lot, as I alluded to, and it was subdivided off in 1993 specifically to create a standalone property for the non-conforming use of the welding company and then later the excavation company. The proposed non-conforming auto repair operation will occur in that very same building and on the same property having the excavation property and the landscape storage. Denial of the variance is going to mean that the longstanding non-conforming use would be able to continue, but the proposed use that we believe is going to have minimal impact will not. The second element of this criteria is whether there is no fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance and the application here. The purpose of the ordinance, of course, is to, as I stated earlier, to ensure that by changing the purpose, manner, or extent of the non-conforming use from one to another that you don't inadvertently harm abutters or members of the public. We believe here that the proposed use is going to be quite similar to the existing nonconformity in that the activity is not going to be visible to abutting properties because it's going to be taking place indoors. As I pointed out, there's quite a bit of buffering between the building and the abutting property on the newer subdivision. It's not going to be creating noise because the work is going to be done, and any traffic that's going to be generated from repairing three to four vehicles on average a day is going to be coming to and from or using the same access point that has been used for decades and which is where, you know, as Chair Pryor noted, that's where the two mailboxes are. So what's not is that there's going to be a new driveway or a new point of access. Finally, the last criteria, whether or not the proposed use is reasonable. This is a small-scale auto facility that we're proposing. It's something that's needed in the area and most likely, we believe, would be welcome in Exeter. The repair facility is going to be well away from the road, and the property is not going to be changing in appearance as a result of what we're proposing to do, so there's not going to be any change to... For the visual appearance of the two lots that otherwise might see it. As I said, the operation's going to occur indoors. We're going to make arrangements for the proper disposal of waste oil. No change in the access, no new driveway, and I would note that, you know, the amount of traffic coming and going through the welding and the excavation company may have fluctuated over the years, but the nature of this traffic, we believe, generated from three to four vehicles coming and going along with Mr. Jefferson, is going to be minimal and is going to really consist of those vehicles being dropped off and picked up during the designated business hours. So with that, we believe that we have satisfied the criteria to enable the existing non-conforming use to go from one to another, and I would be happy to... Actually, there's one other point that I wanted to make. In terms of the hours of operation, Mr. Jefferson intends to have those hours be Monday through Friday, 9 to 6, and Saturday by appointment in the morning only. And as I said, his plan is to have, on average, three to four vehicles that he's working on a day. Sometimes that might be two cars a day, sometimes that might be five, but on the average, that's what it would be. So I'm happy to answer any questions which you may have, and Mr. Jefferson's here to answer any questions about his operation. Mr. Berry's also here to answer any questions about the property in general.
Thank you. I do have some questions, and start with mine if you don't mind. You keep using the word "small," Ms. Summers. Small auto repair operation. I don't believe the word "small" occurs in our regulations. So it's an auto repair business.
True.
The characterization of "small," if approved, there's nothing to keep it from growing in size. It is an auto repair business. Is that correct? Because there's no definition of "small" business in here or small auto repair.
That is true, that there is no definition of "small" that referenced in the ordinance. I'm making representations, however, as to what the applicant intends to do here, so the board can make of that as you wish.
Thank you. Let me ask about septic and water. I realize this is not on Town Water or Sewer out there. A business is required to have a septic system, is required to have, I believe, a functioning... I mean, you're going to have employees and customers. It's going to have to be a functioning toilet. Is there water and sewer on the property?
So let me address, first of all, the last point that you raised, and then I'll go back and answer those questions. Mr. Jefferson will only have himself present. He may have a partner be there some of the time, but he's not looking to have, you know, employees, per se. It's going to be him. Obviously, there will be customers coming in. You're absolutely correct. And Mr. Jefferson himself and/or Mr. Berry, who's likely to be visiting, will also need the services of water and sewer. So that's just by way of context. The plan for both of the water and sewer questions are that water is currently being provided via Karen Vences' property of, what is it, 113? And Mr. Jefferson intends to use that water until such time as he drills a well himself. So that is how that particular issue will be addressed. With regard to the septic, there's a little bit of ambiguity about that. There is the belief, and I've not personally been able to confirm this or not, that there is a septic system in the back of the property. I can't confirm it. So what we would represent to this board is that there will be tests done to see whether that existing, whatever it may be, is functional, and if it is not, then Mr. Jefferson recognizes that he will have to, in order to be able to operate a business, he will have to go through the process of obtaining a state-approved septic system and installing that.
I also understand, from looking at other maps that the town provides, that this is very close to Aquifer.
It is close, but it is not in the Aquifer Protection District.
And that's not noted anywhere on the maps that you provided. Is it within setbacks from the Aquifer?
Yes, I believe so. I mean, there's not going to be any construction going on there. If the question is where the septic is going to be located, then obviously that would need to be taken into account when the septic is designed and/or installed.
That's not part of this board's purview.
Correct.
Right. Let's see if I had anything else. At present, there is no sign at the road.
I agree. There's no sign.
There's no sign. Is the plan to put in a sign?
I don't know.
Because you did make the comment that it would not change the appearance of the neighborhood and the impact of the neighborhood. A sign would change the... Would be a serious impact, and I can't imagine running a business without a sign.
I don't know. Mr. Jefferson, you want to address that?
So there is an existing post out front that used to have a sign on it. It currently does not at the moment, and if I... I would like to be able to potentially put one out there, which I would, of course, ask for a permit because I believe that's the proper procedure to have one put out. Speaking with Mr. Eastman here about that. I haven't yet. I'm saying I'd...
My concern, frankly, sir, is that a legal non-conforming use has... We don't write these regulations. We simply enforce them. Has a very large sign is allowed, which is quite surprising. So I just want to make that...
In addition, you don't own the land with the frontage near the road, so I was wondering if there was a right in the right-of-way to locate a business sign.
That I don't have an answer for.
I mean, as a business owner, that is a concern that you should have, as well as, obviously, some of the other issues that have been raised.
I did speak with Karen because she... They used to have the autoglass place down at 163 on her property, and I had spoke to her about maybe putting a sign about this big on that existing post that's still out front.
So if they're agreeable, then I'm sure you can reach an agreement on allowing a sign within the right-of-way that you have, but I just didn't know if that was something you'd considered.
Yep.
Why don't we go through the questions first, and then you can address it?
Yeah. Are there any questions from other members of the board?
I have a few.
Laura?
I just wanted to ask, approximately when did the welding company... When did that go out of business, or was that no longer a business there? How long ago?
I'll let... This is just a welding company.
The welding company, which was the originally there?
So he ran in there to 2016, according to Dennis here that owns that property currently.
So the welding was there until 2016?
Yes.
Okay. You also made reference to the fact that waste... That oil would be managed, but what about all the other types of fluids that are typically handled in an auto shop? Antifreeze, those types of things? How are those things going to be managed?
Recycling company. You have... Usually what we do... I have work for multiple auto shops. You have a 55-gallon drum typically inside. You put your waste antifreeze in, and then you call a company, and they pull it out, and then they give you new antifreeze when they show up, or you can just pay for the recycling part of that.
Okay. And then I believe that the driveway right now is gravel. Is that correct?
Yes.
And will it remain gravel?
Yes.
So are... What are your plans for dealing with vehicles that may be sitting there that could be leaking into the ground?
If needed, I could put down something else down there, but most of the vehicles would be coming right into the shop and then leaving. I don't really plan on having anything dispensing fluids on the property, but if I had to force something or have something asphalted to contain it, I mean, that's not really, you know, a big problem for me.
Okay. And then inside the building, is there proper drainage in the building for those types of things? And like, where does that drainage go? So you're saying you're going to put them in the... You're going to put the cars that may be leaking something or whatever in the building. What type of drainage?
I usually use Speedy Dry to put down and absorb stuff which goes into a dumpster and gets disposed of properly.
Okay. And then you said that all of the work would be done inside, so that would be minimizing noise.
Yep.
Is the building air-conditioned?
It will be.
Okay. So doors will be remaining closed so that neighbors can't hear?
Yeah, I like air conditioning and heat, so I plan on staying inside of that building, trying to minimize because she's very close to the building. I don't want to disturb her. I'd like to get along with any neighbors that would be there instead of... I'd like to get along with any neighbors that would be there instead of anger people in the neighborhood, so.
Okay. I think those are all my questions.
Which brings me back to one that I think Sharon mentioned earlier, and I'm sorry, executive privilege here. On the exhibit three, Ms. Summers?
Yes.
You said that there was, there's two things that I wanted to ask. One is there's a, you said there's a car with a red house, that would be?
That would be Karen Vences' house.
Vences' house.
Correct.
And there's a yellow line that's been drawn on the map?
Yes.
Can you explain that?
Yes, that yellow line shows the distance between, if you look at the tax map, which is exhibit one, it shows the various buildings that are on 115-12 where the repairs are going to take place. So the yellow line depicts the distance between the buildings on 115-12 and the building that's on 100-2-1. So that just depicts the distance between where the repairs are going to be taking place and the nearest house.
Ah, so I thought you described earlier that the building that is somewhat parallel to the road, which would be the two-tone gray roof that we can see to the left of the yellow line?
Yep.
Seems to be considerably closer. I'm just wondering why you chose that point.
Actually, I'm going to let Mr. Jefferson come back up here and explain, because I may have misstated that, because this is...
That's the building right there.
That's the building? And then this long building?
That's the old chicken coop.
Okay, okay. So that's my mistake. However...
So the distance is considerably shorter to the nearest house?
I would say by 20 feet or so, but it's still significant.
Okay.
The nearest house being the Vences' house?
That's, pardon me?
The nearest house?
The nearest house being the Vences' house, correct. The one with the yellow line, that is the one of the subdivision lots, the subdivision of 2022.
So can I just ask a point of clarification? So that white dot that's by that blue thing?
Yep.
Should actually be by the white and gray building?
That's correct.
So that yellow line should be going that way?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's almost identical, I'm eyeballing with a pen, this is a little rough and ready, but it's almost identical to the distance to the Vences' house. And they're both considerably, they're both close. Okay.
And...
Laura, are you all set?
Yeah, I think I have all my questions.
And so if I'm looking at the tax lot map, this yellow line that's close to the Farmington, closest to the Farmington cul-de-sac, that yellow line is also essentially where the Aquifer overlay ends, at that yellow line, or is there, do you know?
I couldn't, I couldn't answer that.
Okay.
But again, we're not doing anything in the Aquifer, and we are not in the Aquifer District. This lot is not in the Aquifer District. So it may, it may very well be right on the line.
Okay. Another question I have is about the landscape operation that's currently being operated. So what types of vehicles are coming in and out every day? And with this future use, are, I want to understand what type of vehicles are coming in and out to remove the barrels of waste? And then are there tow trucks and that type of thing that will be accessing the property as well?
Okay. I'm going to let Mr. Jefferson answer all those questions.
I would probably say there would be a tow truck here and there. I don't really have a lot of tow-ins. I'm really small scaled, so I have a bunch of clients that have multiple vehicles that I work on typically. A couple landscaping people and just people with everyday cars, all, you know, smaller vehicles that aren't CDL rated or anything. And to touch base on the, for the oil removal, I have a gentleman that I've been giving all my waste oil to, that I generate here and there, to Dave Bunnell, he's just the guy that I give it to, he burns it in a waste oil furnace at his house. And typically, the antifreeze vehicle is, I wouldn't say it's, it's probably classified as medium-duty, but it's a small box truck. The guy usually houses, I think, about six 55-gallon drums usually in that, various just antifreeze products, so.
Okay.
I have worked at two shops in town in Exeter, and both those shops, we use the same procedure for, for storing and getting rid of the recycled antifreeze, so.
So not like the kind of vehicle that would have a loud beep-beep when it backs up? You know, the big?
I couldn't answer that question.
Okay.
It's a smaller vehicle, it's not that big. It would be under probably, I'd say the weight rating on it would probably be about 16,000 pounds, which is...
Erin, what might be helpful also, if you could tell them how frequently the pickup is for the waste materials?
Oh, that's, I probably generate, I mean, I would think I would probably try and rate a little more fluids once, if I was allowed into that shop, but probably every four months, five, six, maybe eight months for antifreeze and used oil. I like plastic containers for it because they don't rot or anything, so I usually store used oil in that. Probably, I think right now, I do probably three 55-gallon drums a year right now, so.
I have just another quick question that probably would be best for you to answer.
Okay.
So with the, with the auto repair business, well, that'll be individual clients, to some extent, bringing their own cars in, sometimes a tow truck. How does that compare to the landscape operation now? So is the in-and-out mostly employees of landscape company dropping off vehicles? Or...
I think Dennis is better to answer that question, but I would say he pretty much just stores, like his, he's got a skid steer there and a couple of the small things he stores, so. I don't think anything that I would bring in, bring onto the property would be any larger than stuff that already has been going in and out of there for years.
But how often are, is that equipment going in and out today?
I haven't really seen, I mean, I've been going down to that shop for a while, I haven't really seen much move in a while, so.
Okay, so there will be an increase of traffic going in and out in comparison to what's there today?
I would say that the, that the amount of traffic has fluctuated over the years. I think that what Aaron is trying to say is that there's not too much going on over the years, but if you look at the whole spectrum of the nonconforming use over the years, what we're proposing really doesn't alter that.
But this would be the first instance in which clients are arriving on the property?
Well, I don't...
The welding shop.
Yeah, no, I, that's an excellent point. I mean, there is a public component to that, there's no question about it. But back in the day, when this was operating as a welding shop, there were members of the public that would come onto the property.
Understood.
Yes.
I'm concerned about the right-of-way. How wide is it? And is it going to be wide enough to accommodate the traffic that you're going to be having during the winter, enough for plowing and snow and...
Well, it's, Martha, it's the right-of-way that's been out there for years that has serviced, and it's a deeded right-of-way, that was created when the subdivision took place in 1993. So I guess I would answer that by saying that it's wide enough and sturdy enough to accommodate the various equipment that's come and gone over that, over decades now, including excavation equipment and people coming in to seek services for welding, so I think will be adequate.
Can I touch, please?
Sure, sure, go ahead.
And also Dennis here had the excavation business where he had a low bed and, you know, moved excavators on it that were pretty substantial-sized, and that made it in and out of that property without a problem, so.
After, after the right-of-way gets to your property, does it end there? I mean, or...
Yes.
Yeah.
It doesn't continue on to other properties?
So it only services your property?
Correct.
Okay.
Tax map shows the right-of-way, it appears to be quite wide. I cannot make out the measurement, though. It looks like maybe 41 point something?
I've got the deed here, hold on.
Dennis says it's approximately 50 feet wide.
And I did go look at it, it looked plenty wide enough.
I know on the deed, it does service a width, I believe, if you read the deed, for 165A Kingston Road.
So I don't, I can't give you an exact, but I think it's over 41 feet.
The subdivision that was created in 1993 depicts the right-of-way as being, it looks like it was, it was a proposed 50-foot right-of-way. Now, whether the actual width is that, I don't know. I mean, it may have been that at one time or another, there was a thought about, you know, developing that back lot for something, but it, at a minimum, it appears to be 12 feet wide. And I would say, based upon just how this is configured, it's much wider than that. And if the current owner says it's 50 feet, then I would go with that.
There's a big difference between the deeded right-of-way and the actual?
Right, right.
Width of the roadway that exists, which is nowhere near 50.
No, I'm just referring to the, you know, the subdivision plan.
Okay.
How many acres is the lot, the parcel? Do you know how big it is?
I believe it's 4.4.
4.4?
I believe.
Yes, approximately.
Okay.
Are there any further questions for the applicant?
Yes, I have not had my chance, so...
Fire away.
So the use is not, has been nonconforming, has it been continuous enough to satisfy the requirement that a nonconforming use be somewhat continuous?
We have discussed that with the zoning officer, and I think the answer is yes.
Okay. Very good. So just looking at these maps, there's not a lot of measurements, but it appears that the structures might also be nonconforming due to their encroachment on setbacks? Is that considered at all?
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that would matter.
Okay.
Regardless, I didn't ask that question, but if they, provided that the building is not expanding or changing?
Okay.
The footprint of the structures would be grandfathered.
Okay.
But there is, there is one thing that has just kind of like come up in my mind and would dealt with this before on New Fields Road, with a change in use. This is a state right-of-way. I believe the state of New Hampshire would have to approve any change in use of that property in the right-of-way.
With the driveway permit?
With the driveway permit.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm, well, I guess, I'll, I'm not sure that that's necessarily the case, because the, first of all, the, this is an easement over somebody else's property, that's certainly something that we will check into, along with all the other issues that we've talked about tonight. But I don't think that that's, you know, within the purview of this board, certainly.
Well, it was a condition of approval on another project.
It can be a condition, right.
Well, yeah, because they needed to get approval from the state, because it was a substantial, because there was a change in use. And it was a curb cut that was approved by the state of New Hampshire.
Well, certainly, if, if the board requests that there be a condition of approval, such that we obtain a curb cut, if needed, for change of use at the state level, then we would be agreeable to that.
I've been spending a lot of time talking about driveway permits on state routes these days at my profession, and I don't, yeah, it's fun. And I don't think, in this case where, you know, traffic volumes aren't going to change drastically or anything, it's going to be a big issue, but I do think that it would be something that would be wise?
Yeah.
To run past the district office at DOT, because it is a different use. So...
Other questions?
The other, I think, actually, that, so I wanted to clarify that the building that will be housing the repairs is the taller sort of barn-like structure? Or is, there was a long, narrow, lower structure that I think someone referred to maybe as a coop?
Yes.
Is that intended to be utilized as part of the business? I just want to understand what's happening.
I don't have any plans to store anything of car nature or anything in there. It's pretty much just dry storage in there. It's not going to be heated, so I don't really have any plans for using that to do...
In the long building?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I plan on just staying in the confines of that, the two-tone roof building.
And, you know, just in terms of a comment, impervious surfaces are often considered a good, or pervious surfaces considered a good thing, but when you're dealing with like vehicles and exterior storage, it's not always a great thing, and Laura brought this up, I believe, but you just want to consider being careful about exterior storage of materials or vehicles or anything like that, because there's not an impervious surface.
I do plan on keeping all the waste byproducts that I create inside that building anyways, so I don't want to put anything outside like that. I don't plan on having any used oil tank or antifreeze. I guess the only thing that would be outside would be a sealed dumpster that, you know, there's already one on the property, so I would just add one and have that as, you know, where I put all that type of stuff, so that would be sealed, so.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Any further questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're going to open this up to the public and see if there's anyone who would like to speak about this application, pro or con.
I can, I will.
Please first.
Okay.
Microphone, please introduce yourself and state your name and why you're here.
Karen Vences. I live at 163 Kingston Road. When we were talking about a sign, when we bought our property at 163, my husband had converted, we have a garage, and at the time, he had opened up a glass business. And so he, we put up a post up the edge of our road on Kingston Road, and he was told a, you know, a very, a small sign that he could put up, and we have, that post is still up there, so. As far as a sign, I mean, I think at the, at that time, it had to be a certain length or a certain, but when Bruce and Carby's Welding, they had a humongous sign on one of the trees that was up there on the corner. I don't know if all of you have taken a drive-by to see where the property is, but, so.
Are you, I believe it's you're the fee owner of that area. Are you okay with the sign, or is that...
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, it's, you know, the post is there, I mean, it's not an ungodly sign, you know, ugly.
Okay. Just want to make sure you're okay.
It's a good sign, a good size for it, so.
I will point out that as a home occupation, you are allowed four square feet of sign.
Okay.
This would be considered, and as I said, we do not write these regulations, this is, would be considered a legal nonconforming use. Sign that's allowed is 24 square feet.
Okay.
Do you want a 24-square foot sign on your property?
I don't want it that big.
That's bigger than the ones that the hotels are allowed down there.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I...
I don't know why it says that, but that's what it says. That's a legal nonconforming use.
Yeah.
So you said there was a humongous sign there for a welding business?
Yeah.
That was probably allowed under the...
It was on a tree, and the tree, I think, died, and the whole thing fell down.
Right.
But we were there, and I think when my husband had opened up the glass shop that we had in our small garage, it was on a post, and it was, I don't know, it was like a 16 by 20, I don't know what size it was, but...
Pretty small.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else?
I don't, but do you have any?
Yeah, I have a question. So you said the glass shop is no longer in business?
No, my husband passed away, so he, we had stopped that. I mean, we took the sign down, but the, the post is still up there, but it's, I have a plant hanging up there right now, but...
And how long has it been since it was in business?
Um, let's see, he passed in 2011. I would say probably four, maybe four years prior to that.
Okay, so early, like, early to mid 2000s. So there wasn't any, really any contributing traffic in that area from your business since about 2006 or '07?
I would say that's probably about true, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Chuck Melton, I'm at 165.
Okay.
And we're concerned about the Aquifer from leaking vehicles. I was wondering if there, is a map of that, where the Aquifer is?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please, sir?
I wonder if there's like a map that shows where the Aquifer extends to?
The Aquifer has not been presented as part of the application today, because it's apparently does not touch on this property. You're at 165, so you're directly in front of the...
We, we're off a well, so it's...
You're on a well there. I believe that there is an Aquifer in that area that I was, when I looked at it in I believe that there is an aquifer in that area that I was, when I looked at an aquifer map, it looked like there was one there, and part of the reason I did that is because on the tax map that we were provided, it does show that there's a bit of a wetland that exists between two of the properties off of Farmington. But that, again, that's not contiguous with your property, so, are you, are you familiar with the aquifer layout in that area?
No, I'm not. That's why I'm wondering if that information is available.
I'm sure there is an overlay that's available through the town, through the tax maps, that are, not through the, but through town maps.
Oh, Aaron, how many, are there lifts?
The questions are addressed to us, please.
Okay.
We'll be glad to get somebody to answer it for you.
Okay. Are there lifts in the building right now?
Have no idea. And there would need to be one, is that your
Well, going back to your point of what's small, how do you define small? If there were three lifts already there, or none, it might
We'll get an answer for you.
Okay.
Thank you. You had your hand up earlier.
Yeah, I'll
I'm not gonna, I don't want to badge you into it, but
All right.
I appreciate everyone taking a moment to listen to what I have to say. My name is Tom Conklin.
I'm a resident at 1 Farmington Road, which is the abutting property. I appreciate you guys' interest in trying to rezone this area, but I do have objections with the proposal. So, I'm sitting here with, you know, fellow residents of 1 Farmington, or on Farmington Road. I have Dave Kestlin here, who was at 3 Farmington Road, and then Zach Feirman, who's at 161 Kingston Road. So, Zach and I are abutting properties. We received a certified letter six days ago informing us of what is going on here, and I was immediately upset with the proposal. You know, I think that the three to four cars a day, it sounds like a small-scale operation, but now we're talking about a 24-foot sign for advertising something that's allowed and under rules and regulations. We live in a capitalistic environment. I'm sure if you did eight cars, you'd probably make more money, right? So, I'm a little, I'm concerned about the traffic. Furthermore, you know, we keep talking about this easement. We talk about the access road itself. It sits at the bottom of a hill that's marked as 40 miles an hour. It's Route 111, okay? It's super busy. People are going to try and pass when they try and go in there. We know what happens. My wife and I walk on 111 to go to Greystone every morning with my five-month-old daughter in a stroller, okay? Concerned about turnarounds on Farmington Road. Somebody misses that turn, what happens? Turning around in my neighborhood. My five-year-old daughter, his two-year-old son, his three-month-old daughter, who's going to be crawling and eventually walking, are going to be on that road, okay? I don't have any guarantees that that's not going to happen. Furthermore, let's talk about the aquifer. I don't know about the aquifer either. I didn't have time to come down here and inquire about that, but I can tell you that I have a pond on my property with a lot of standing water right now. I'd be hard-pressed to not think that there wouldn't be any leaching into surrounding properties. I studied biochemistry, okay? I understand polar versus non-polar. I understand easements. I understand exactly what happens when materials like antifreeze or oil get into the ground. They leach. And we all have aquifers in that area. I'd be hard-pressed to not think that we don't share an aquifer. The concern that I have is that there is this existing well that we're going to test out. Who's going to do that testing? Who's going to pass it? And what's going to happen? How do I know? What guarantees do I have that I'm not going to be consuming this water? That I feed my chi, my child, my wife, my dog? I don't have any guarantees. This disposal, sure, it sounds great. I know what a 55-gallon drum looks like, but how do we know that that compliance is going to happen? I don't have those guarantees, right? I understand that I'm coming up here as a concerned resident in the area, and I'm abutting this non-conforming property, but I find it a little disturbing that this lawyer comes in here and tells me that I have to pick between two evils. It's either an auto body shop, or I'm going to gear up for more of what we haven't been doing, because I can tell you, I've been living in this house for two years now, and it was advertised as nothing happens behind a house. And now, we're advertising three or four cars, and I just see it being a lot more than what is being advertised right now. So, you know, I, on top of the potential dumping, you know, the noise ordinances, I know that that was potentially, you know, mitigated through enclosures and heat and cooling, but we know people hang out outside, right? People want to go outside, smoke a cigarette, have a conversation. How do we know that cars aren't going to be parked on the property, right? Like, I understand that you say that that's not going to be the case, but what if somebody can't get their car? You get a shop, you only have so many spots. You have to leave it outside. If we don't have asphalt, it's gravel, guess what? Permeable, right? Goes right, right through. I just want more guarantees on what is going to be mitigated for me and my family, right? This has been zoned right next to where I live. So, I'm just coming up here as a concerned citizen. You're doing the same, so. And then I would also like to just understand, did you mention fee recipient for a sign?
What?
Is she a fee recipient for the sign?
She's the fee simple owner of the land where a sign would potentially go.
So, a fee would be incurred?
No, 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 that is, it means she owns all the property, she has property rights. The right-of-way is a property right that's been transferred to the parcel out back
Got.
that they have the right to pass over.
Got.
But it doesn't necessarily, I haven't read the language, but it doesn't necessarily include the right for a business sign. But if she's willing to allow that, then they could probably have a business sign, and she would probably have some say over the size of it
Sure.
since it's her property. So, you know, I don't, I haven't investigated all these documents, but I think that it's reasonable that, you know, she could allow a sign there, and she could probably have some control over how big it is.
No, she has no control over what's signed on another property. She cannot allow his sign on her property.
Oh, that's true, right? Because it's a business
Repeat that, please? She can or cannot allow?
She cannot allow.
Because that's
Only the town of Exeter can allow that sign for her use, but not for anybody else's. No off-site signing.
That's right, because it's like a billboard.
No off-site signage at all.
So, there was, there will be no sign at this property?
There will be a sign, but it'll have to be on his property.
Which starts some hundred and something feet off of the road.
And it can't be in the state right-of-way, so, and that's a pretty big right-of-way. I'm just saying, she does not have the right to put a sign for him.
I see. Yeah, you make a good point, Doug.
Interesting.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say. I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else? Letting him do the talking? See, badgering him into it.
Good, I keep it short and sweet.
Name, please?
Zach Feirman at 161 Kingston Road.
Okay.
And I just echo the sentiments that, and concerns that Tom has, mainly just because my wife and I have two young kids, and we're constantly playing on that road, the turnarounds would be a problem. And just the noise, nobody wants to be having breakfast in their porch and hearing an air wrench going off. And I'm just a little concerned about the noise and obviously the water pollution, so I would like that to be considered in the decision.
I'm going to take advantage of your presence here and ask a question of you, if I may
Sure.
that I could ask just about anybody. During the time that you've been at 161, is there, is noise an issue with the existing business?
No, and I don't know much about it. I knew there was or is or some sort of antiquated business that has been there in the past, but there's almost never any traffic, aside from my neighbors just pulling in and out of their house, their driveway. In terms of construction, equipment, you know, tools, noise, stuff like that, there's none of that. It's essentially silent, except for the neighbors.
Okay.
I apologize if you said. How long have you been at the property?
My wife and I moved in December 22nd of this beginning of the year, so however long it is.
Not long.
Not long. Not a full year.
Long enough.
That's all.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks.
Yep, three for three.
Hello, board. My name's Dave Kestlin. I live at 3 Farmington Road. I do not abut the property, but I have very similar concerns to my neighbors. I, basically, every concern I had was talked about, maybe not answered to my liking, but it was talked about. What do we do in terms of risk mitigation? Meaning, car stays out over the weekend, it's leaking something, and to Tom's point, it's in a porous environment. What's the mitigation? What recourse do we have?
That's not a question that we can answer, but I, it's a question that you have a right to ask, absolutely. Would anyone else like to address the board? Ms. Summers?
Yes, I'm going to have Aaron probably come up and address a couple of the things. But let me just say that I guess we put to bed the issue of the sign, so something, something of that nature will need to be worked out. I'm going to ask, one of the questions I know was whether or not there are going to be lifts. I'm going to have Aaron address that when he comes up. I did want to respond to a couple of the things. First of all, this is not a rezoning. Second of all, my client, at my instruction, went around to try to talk to everybody, and I know that he left business cards at least at somebody's house. So, there was an effort to try to, you know, have a discussion about this, and I think that's important for this board to understand. Secondly, with regard to the aquifer, again, it is not on this, this property. We did check that.
It's not in the area of the improvements or not on the lot at all?
It is not on the lot.
Okay, thank you.
We did check that. It, I would suspect that it's very close, but it is not on this property.
Thank you.
As for whether or not there are going to be turnarounds on Farmington Road, I'm skeptical about that, and I guess I'm going to have Aaron speak to that based upon the current activity that's going on and the lack of turnarounds. He will speak to the fact that there is, I mean, I can't dispute the fact that these folks aren't hearing any noise, but there is activity going on, on the property right now. So, I don't anticipate that there's going to be, that there's going to be a lot of turnarounds going on, on Farmington.
I just ask, is Farmington Road a public road, or is it a private road?
I'm not sure.
Public.
It's a town road. Okay.
Okay. So, with, with regard to the guarantees that have been asked for here, I guess I would say a couple of things. One is that this is an existing non-conforming commercial use. And so, there are no guarantees that there might not be some sort of leak or anything like that with regard to the existing non-conforming use. I think my client has represented that he is going to be doing the work inside the building. If the board wants some additional reasonable conditions to be imposed to ensure that the cars are going to remain inside the building and the like, you know, we would certainly consider that. He has talked about the fact that he has a regime in place to remove these, these, these waste materials. So, again, I think it's a well-thought-out plan, and I think that while they're to the point of the neighbors, I suppose there might be some risk, but there's also a risk with the existing non-conforming use. So, with that, I would ask this board to, to grant the relief that's requested, and I would also ask Aaron to come up here and address the issue of what will be happening in the way of lifts and, and the issue about the, the, the current or the turnarounds on Farmington Road and what may or may not be happening currently.
We recognize that the applicant is not responsible for whether somebody misses the traffic, misses the sign or the exit or not, and has to turn around. I think the point is that there's additional traffic that's going to be taking place, and there's going to be more retail than there has been recently. There may have been some retail
Yes.
in the past.
Yes.
But when that retail business existed, Farmington Road did not exist.
Yes.
And so, the point is that this is the nearest place that one can turn around. So, I don't think that anything he says is going to, is going to have an influence here.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. And I think that, you know, given, given the information that we've heard tonight about not, and I haven't, obviously have not had a chance to speak to my client about this, but certainly, I think he's going to have to invest in having an appropriate social media presence, a good website, giving explicit directions to people and so forth, in order to mitigate any concerns that the neighbors may have about these inadvertent turnarounds. And he's going to need to do that anyway, just to let people know where his business is. So, I, again, I, I think that that's, you know, something that will take care of itself. So, Aaron, if you could come on up, please, and just, again, talk about some of the, the two things that were, were talked about in terms of the number of lifts and also about the leakage.
I anticipate putting in probably a couple lifts inside the building. It's 40 by 50 feet. It services two doors, so my plan was to put one in the back corner probably and one on the other side, you know, just straight in the doors, more or less.
But these are lifts that require digging down with a hydraulic, or are they?
No, I would put in two post lifts that require six inches of concrete. You put in, I believe it is, four-inch bolts that go down into the concrete, and then you just tighten them up, and it's just two posts that come up like this.
So, you're talking about making a significant investment in this property?
I would be, yes.
And it is not our business to judge your business plan?
Yep.
But you're making a significant investment in a business that you're talking about, a small auto repair business with a modest number of vehicles?
Mm-hmm. I, it's what, I mean, I can't work on the ground, so investing into lifts to put in there, I mean, they're not insanely expensive. I can, for example, Rotary is a premium brand lift. I can buy two of those used for $3,000 apiece, so I don't consider that a ton, ton of money.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it's definitely considerable money, but
Can I ask you?
Yeah.
I, I mean, you're, you're doing an auto repair business. Even if you keep the vehicles inside, there will be cars parked outside at some point for
Yes.
pickup and drop-off. Would you entertain paving a limited number of parking spaces?
Yes, I did say that when we were discussing about
Okay.
the surface being like that. I wouldn't mind having something outside of that garage anyways, other than
I mean
just gravel, because plowing that, I mean, gravel's not that friendly to deal with, and you know
If we made a condition of approval that you paved, say, a minimum number of, I don't even need, you know, I'm not talking about travel ways or anything, but just a limited number of parking spaces outside of the building, you'd be, that's something you, you could entertain?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Wouldn't we, there also need to be something to address if there's any type of runoff and containment of any type of runoff? So, you pave it, and you have a vehicle that's sitting there that's leaking antifreeze
I'm not sure it's a good solution.
And it's running, it rains, and it runs off into the ground.
I've never seen any vehicle repair facility that's had that. I've only seen fueling and that type of facility that has that kind of
Yeah, a concrete barrier.
barrier around it, but, you know, I mean, I think that might be a bit of a higher burden than is typical, but we can talk about it. I just wanted to find out if he was amenable to the idea of any paved parking, because
I thought it was a good idea previous to even
Okay.
you guys discussing this with me, so.
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to run that one by you, because I do think that that's a reasonable concern, given that you're an auto repair facility.
I mean, if anything coming in, let's say, that was leaking antifreeze or oil, I mean, I'd have dropped inside the building. I also don't want to pick up a mess outside. I mean, you track that all over the place, people would get that on their shoes. I mean
Well, and I think your landlord also has a vested interest in his property not getting any contamination on it, so, but I, you know, I just wanted to throw the idea out there to see if it was considered something you could entertain.
Yeah, I, I thought it was a good idea previous to that, so.
Good, okay. Anybody else have?
Are we all set, Ms. Summers?
Unless the board has any, any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
So, with that, we're going to close the public session and move to deliberations. Thank you very much, everybody who participated in the public session. I appreciate the abutters and the residents coming in to talk with us. I want to address one thing, which is that there's this question, is it a rezoning or not? If they're before us, because it is a change to an existing nonconforming use, and it's a change of use. So it is not a rezoning, but it is a change of use, and it is one that is significant enough so that they're here before us. This is not an automatically just rollover from one business to the next. So we do have a right to ask the questions that we've been asking about the scale of the business. And when it comes to scale, I want to point out that we cannot restrict, and there is no possible way to enforce, even if we were to make a condition of approval, the scale of a business. Once it's an auto repair facility, it's an auto repair facility. The number of vehicles that are stored on the property is not something that enforcement can address. There's no way to go in there and say, oh, you're only allowed six vehicles on your concrete, on your impervious surface. You've got eight stored. That's not the code enforcement officer's purview to do that type of enforcement. So approving this as an auto repair operation really does open up this as a full-scale auto repair facility. Despite the comments that were made by the applicant as to the intended scale of the business, there is no way of guaranteeing that into the future.
It could be remarketed as...
This is an auto repair facility.
That would be grandfathered at that point.
Exactly.
So yeah, you're right.
So I think it is a significant change of use that needs to be addressed by this board. Having made my speech, would anyone else like to contribute to the conversation?
Can I ask a few questions?
Absolutely.
As a newbie and just trying to wade my way through all this. So nonconforming means that at the time where the zoning change was made, it was already an established business that was different than what the R1 zoning, right?
It's not permitted by right. It's either preexisting or it's been
Correct.
granted a variance.
But there's nothing to say, it's not a, either you have a welding business or you have an auto repair. It could also go back to being a traditional R1 use.
The highest and best use of the property in an R1 zone would be as a residence. And they could, this could at four-something acres, this could support a minor subdivision without any problem.
Okay.
And I firmly believe that one of the goals of zoning is to move toward, rather than away from, the goals of zoning, which in this case is as a residential neighborhood.
However, the nonconforming use is established in its property, right?
So, right.
It adds value to the property.
So so long as the purpose, manner, and extent do not change, then the nonconforming use can continue? Under the zoning ordinance, any change in the purpose, manner, and extent of nonconforming use is permitted only by variance. And so my understanding of the request is that we want to allow this change without having to go through variance to the underlying zoning. And I think it's a matter of degree. Is this change so significant or substantial enough that we're really going against the spirit of the ordinance to grant it? Or is this a minimal enough change that the scope, that the spirit of the ordinance would still be met if we're not going through the whole variance from an R1?
But we are going through the same variance criteria.
Right, but variance from the nonconforming use and not, or are we going through the variance criteria of
I understand your question.
Of R1 zoning? So the spirit of the ordinance would be evaluated based on Article 5, nonconforming use, rather than the spirit of the zoning that applies?
Well, I know how the applicant would answer that question. I think my answer would be different than the applicant would.
Okay.
I believe that we are treating this as this is significant enough of a change to the existing nonconforming use so as to require a variance from the underlying R1.
Okay.
That is my interpretation of it, having been through this many times on this board.
So yeah, that was one question that I had. If this is significant enough that it's only permitted by variance, if we do not grant the request today, is there a follow-up where they can come back and ask for the variance from the R1, or is it all together today?
All together today, in my opinion. Laura, did you have further questions?
Yeah, I did. I had another question that came up in the conversation a lot of time, and I know it's not part of our job. However, I do, how are these types of environmental issues monitored and enforced, right? I mean, there is, there are environment, there is the potential for environmental impact from this business, right? So I, how is that enforced by the town of Exeter? How is that monitored by the town of Exeter?
Doug, go up.
I would say if there was some sort of a spill or something happened, first of all, it'd be very difficult to monitor.
Self-reported.
And
Please stop.
It would have to, probably, we would get the DES, Department of Environmental Services, and any other services that the state of New Hampshire has on how to clean it up. I don't think I've ever been involved in anything like this, so...
I'm assuming it's an honor system as far as reporting is concerned?
Yeah, or unless somebody detects something that, something is traveling under
By which point?
the service, surface, you know, and somebody now detecting some byproducts in their well or something, and now we have a problem. It gets, there would be an environmental problem.
So DES does monitor stuff like this. I don't know how, whether they inspect businesses or anything, but I do know that, you know, if there's any concern, they will inspect. And if there's been any contamination, they will require testing and set up a remediation plan and all that stuff. So it behooves the property owner not to let that happen, because it's not good for their property interest. So, you know...
But then there's also the potential for the surrounding, of impact to the surrounding property owners.
Right, which creates liability for the property owner.
And the business owner on the property.
Yeah, so...
I mean, obviously, I'm not saying that somebody's going to intentionally do this, but accidents happen. It happens. Spills happen, and so I just wanted some clarification there on...
And that's where my question came from regarding the parking spaces, because if there's paved parking and there's not recklessness, I think that it's a lot less likely that anything could happen. This property's been operated in a, you know, sort of industrial slash commercial way for a long time without any paved parking, and the opportunity for anything to happen has been there all along. So if we could, you know, mitigate the risk, that would be a good thing.
But we are being asked to give our blessing to what could be a major expansion in the amount of use that takes place, on the amount of risk that could possibly take place on the property. On a piece of property that is surrounded by residential zones that is not where the answer about both water and septic is vague at best. It's very unclear that there is, there are any facilities provided on the site that are required, I would assume, in order to get an occupancy permit. But again, do you even have to give an occupancy permit? So you do?
Absolutely.
So there will be some form of inspection of the property prior to its opening as a business?
Well, you would have to have the septic field, state-approved septic field, and for the new use, you would have, obviously, have to have a certificate of occupancy.
There are a lot of questions here. Anyone else?
What?
Ms. Peddle.
What bothers me about this is the point that you made, that this, if we approve the variance, it goes with the land. So he could turn around and sell it to somebody who really wanted to make a large-scale auto repair, by large scale, I mean, several employees, several more cars, maybe trucks, and so forth. And, but, and that would be permitted, because if we approve, it goes with the land. What also bothers me is how the public is going to find this. I had trouble myself trying to find the right of way. I drove up there, and I found the two mailboxes, and I looked down the road, and it looked a little forbidding. I just don't understand how the general public is going to find this repair place. And you're going to have to have some kind of signage or something. Otherwise, they're going to be sailing by and do what I did and back up. And I don't know, I forget how I turned around. I backed up in somebody's driveway, and then I went across the street and sat in the road across the street and looked, and I still couldn't quite figure out how this was all going to work. I'm just...
The lack of signing is a problem for the applicant, not for us.
Well, but I would argue that it is partially for us, because the lack of signage could impact the abutters.
I think that they're probably going to paint a mailbox a bright color with their business name on it and call it good and use social media to direct people to it, but...
Rather than speculating, I would appreciate somebody on the board volunteering to run through the variance criteria, please.
I don't have my thing. Do you want me, does anyone else want to do it?
No, go for it.
Teresa, do you want to do it?
No, I don't.
You don't?
No, I'll chime in with my thoughts. Yeah.
I didn't want to take it away from you.
No.
Okay. So the variance is not contrary to the public interest, taken together with the spirit of the ordinance, is observed. Proposed use must not conflict with the explicit or implicit purpose of the ordinance, must not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, threaten public health, safety, or welfare, or otherwise in your public rights. So, in your public rights. So I think that there are concerns on this potentially, that there would be some some altering of the character of the neighborhood, although I'm not sure that I fully agree with it. And that there might be some kind of, you know, noise slash potential for, you know, leakage of hazardous materials, so forth, that could also threaten the public safety and welfare. So I'd say that we are certainly not 100% on that.
Anyone else want to comment on the first variance criteria? I personally feel that it is a, I think we're opening up for a significant change, to be honest.
I agree.
I'm very concerned that it doesn't meet the
Okay.
the criteria, changing the essential character.
I agree. I think going from storage and personal repair to a full-function auto repair shop is a pretty significant change to the character.
Okay. So, item three, substantial justice is done. The benefit to the applicant should not be outweighed by harm to the general public or other individuals. We've heard testimony from people that are nearby that they have concerns in that regard as well. So again, I'm not sure we've settled that criteria. The values of surrounding properties are not diminished...
Hang on a sec. Does anybody else want to comment on three? Laura, Teresa, Martha, anybody else want to comment on three? We've expressed reservations about all three thus far.
Yeah, I think I articulated number three as far as...
Laura, you want to go ahead and put?
Sure. Value of surrounding properties are not diminished. There was no testimony regarding property values, and I think, you know, if, I guess, you know, your concern about the scale changing drastically, if there was a drastic change in scale of the business, it would potentially be more concern towards the neighborhood and whether that would affect their property values. But remember, we are only talking about a change in use. Any, it's a nonconforming, any expansion of a nonconforming use would also have to come back before a board. So although he could be busier, he could not expand the building or, you know, clear new trees and pave over more, more stuff without coming back to receive more relief. Is that right, Doug?
That's, that's, well, obviously, if the building expanded, then...
But it's a four-acre lot. He could put in a, or they could put in a building that meets the setbacks, and there wouldn't
But it would still be an expansion of a nonconforming use, so what?
That would be expansion of a nonconforming.
But, but we're already expanding it to be an automotive, so if he's adding a bit, a building to support his automotive...
There's an expansion of a building, and then there's a change of use. We're approving the change of use if we do it. Not, an expansion would still...
I think that's something that we would have to evaluate if it did change. That, at that point, would be a meeting with the owner and a meeting with myself and whether or not I would consider that an expansion, you know, making the building bigger.
That's, I don't think we're really talking about that.
No, I just wanted to be clear, though. There's, talk about this, you know, greatly changing in scale, and I, it could, it could increase in the intensity of the use in terms of how many, how much business he does, but I don't believe the building could become bigger without additional relief.
But the scale of business does tend to increase.
But you're not, you're not giving me a lot of cover on that, Doug, so...
No, I'm not.
So I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, and the scale of the business can increase significantly without changing the size of the building.
Okay, I'm not arguing that one. So anyway, and then the final fifth criteria is literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. And unnecessary hardship means, because of special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, there is no fair and substantial relationship between the general public purposes of the ordinance and the specific application of that provision to the property, and that the proposed use is a reasonable one. Alternatively, unnecessary hardship means that owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, the property cannot reasonably be used in strict conformance with the ordinance. So I think the hardship, I think, would be that the buildings and the use are established. And I would say that the buildings are flexible enough that they could be used in a way consistent with zoning, so I'm not sure that that constitutes a true hardship either. I don't know that there's any special aspects to the buildings that are specific to commercial use only. It looked like a barn to me and a chicken coop to me.
And the lot itself, I think Bob mentioned that the acreage, where it's situated, there's nothing that prevents this from residential use.
I saw a recent commercial garage in, you know, in the course of my work recently that had, it was paved a lot, but it had, it was covered in vehicles. And I know that's not what he's proposing, and I feel, you know, I don't want to go to worst-case scenario, but we do have to consider what the possibility is, because the relief runs with the land. And that would be a negative influence to the rest of the neighborhood if that ever were to happen.
Right, so I guess my question is, we approve this, right? And he stays true to his word, keeps it small, cars not outside. He decides, you know, to change the business. That approval for it to be an automotive repair stays the same. So there's nothing to say that whoever comes in next couldn't expand the business and put in...
We could place conditions of approval that are specific, but I don't know that we can do anything that's clear enough and enforceable enough to limit the size of a business. I mean, I, you know, it was, I'm always hoping to find a way to make everybody happy, and I was thinking maybe the paving of a portion of the parcel would be enough, but I think there are legitimate concerns on several of the criteria, so...
I'd like to remind the members of the board that it is always a good idea to be specific in any motion... specific in any motion, especially a motion to deny, that specifics be mentioned as far as the criteria that the application does or does not meet. With that, I would accept the motion.
Not sure you want me to be that one.
I mean, I'm, technically, I'm allowed to make motions, but I prefer not to. Somebody else like to make a motion? Chair would like to move that we deny the application of Aaron Jefferson for a variance from Article 5, Section 5.1.2b, for a change to an existing non-conforming use to permit a small auto repair operation on the property located at 165 Kingston Road as the board does not feel that variance criteria one, two, three, or five have been fully met by the application. Is there a second?
I would second.
Moved in second, is there a discussion of the motion? Chair, none. All called to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
By saying aye, you're saying denying.
That is correct, Ms. Penn.
I'll say aye.
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 Aye. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, the only other piece of other business that we have, it's thank the members of the public for coming out as well, the abutters. The only other piece of business that we have then is the approval of the minutes of the July 18th meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Which I went through at some detail, and as usual, I wasn't able to find anything in here. Anybody else?
I got a couple questions, but I'll, I'll probably have more.
No, I hoped it pretty well, and I was unable to come up with...
So Laura, Laura, Bob, and Teresa would be the voting members on the minutes.
I read 90% of it. I didn't quite finish, but I didn't see anything either. She was very, very good.
Nothing?
No.
Nothing? Motion to approve the minutes of the July 18th meeting?
I would move to approve the minutes of the July 18th, 2023 meeting.
Second?
I second.
Moved in second. And all in favor approving, say aye.
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 Any other business? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Now that I know what you meant by do...
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.